All right, we're ready to the regular meeting for May. You like me out there, but for the minute.
There seems to be a different level for some reason lately than this. I'm probably should have recorded it right now.
All right, we good?
Sorry.
Okay, no problem. So action on the meeting minutes, from the regular meeting of April 3rd. You have somebody move the minutes?
Also.
All right, move Robert's support. Yeah, okay, any changes to the minutes?
Who was the who was you support?
Uh, sort of. Any no changes, all in favor of the minutes at both that say aye. Aye, opposed? None, okay. Then it's approved. Approval of the agenda, can we have someone move the agenda tonight? Um, okay, move over. Support Roberts, any changes to the agenda? None, um, all in favor of the agenda as both did say aye. Aye, opposed? None, all right, agenda is approved. Public hearings, we have one public hearing for tonight. The capital improvements plan. And we'll probably have a brief presentation for this, I don't know Grace, Michelle, who will be taking? All right, let me race.
There shouldn't be much of anything new in there aside from I adjusted the chin for the uh, the railroad crossing. But other than that, it should be the same as for you. Has any other comments or questions?
And we um, felt to have some discussion a little bit, if we don't have any questions for. And none right now, we can, I got that that presentation, so we can go through to. We're so far, but yes, we can go to audience, open up the public hearing. For the capital improvements plan, we get the years now, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight. Um, so if anybody would like to speak to this item, please step forward, state your name and address, or if you're virtual. Raise your hand, yeah, it's like starting. But I don't see anybody. Online, oh sorry, we want the public hearing settled here.
Okay, um, so for anyone who's here who might wish to comment, the C I D is a is a planning for um, capital improvements going forward, it spans six years, so.
Thank you for that brief intro, that's great, um, okay, seeing no public. Before this time, we'll close the public hearing. Upset or what? Um, okay, so at this time, we're in for discussion. We will. And um. All right, at this time, you have the planning commission, the IC for the C I B. Or if you want, yeah, available for discussion for, if somebody would like to make a motion, which is on. Uh, actually, we've got a.
Another resolution.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Where we have.
Page two.
A resolution here.
Two seven.
Right, there we go, if somebody, uh, we have a resolution to move, if somebody move, unless there's any discussion items at this time.
I just want to open the cap.
Do you want one comment?
We've got the second street corridor and street skate plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe having two separate items in the C I P plans, that they are in. Uh, definitely two different exercises, no big deal. To me, but it's still here, and I know we talked about it.
I mean, I was very talk additional thought on that, isn't it? If it really made it.
Oh, I thought the consensus left, I want to do this as.
Yeah, it seems like that, I guess, but no point taken, and I don't see any other really additional discussion now, so I guess. All right, well, we got, I guess that's it, but thank you Chad, anything else additional? We have a, if somebody would like to make the motion, again, the resolution you can see on page seven of our packet. And we can just read uh. The last word as for the P I there, we told resolve. Somebody with the name.
One move, I can't read it though, because this will take me a day and a half.
Final, so do you want to read the the resolution as, well, we do need to at least, uh, both like, so you're reading the resolution to, uh. At least get the last one done, once everything. For the official record, if anybody, you're moving, uh, with the planning commission recommended that that extra city council about the twenty twenty-three twenty. It's out with the group's plan.
That's my remains.
Okay, so now that's your resolution, all right, we have the city council, do we have support for that?
Florence. So who is the motion?
Uh, most Roberts, before you leave. Any additional discussion? No additional discussion, uh, can we have a vote on the capital improvements plan, please?
Phillips?
Yeah.
Ely? Yeah, Marsh?
Yeah.
Over?
Yes.
Upper?
Yeah.
Rivers?
Yeah.
Hill?
Yeah.
Wall?
Yes. Capital improvements plan is back on for this year. Yes.
Well, we're a coverage to hear.
I don't think so, like they're um. Will you move me, I can try to go through, but there's a delay, it's like, I'm playing, she's going to be.
We good?
Yes.
All right, sorry. You can watch, uh, I mean.
Yeah, there's no outlook right here, so.
Okay.
I guess, until grace.
Grace is not a case?
Yeah.
All right.
It's the start of that, you all right?
Not wrong, this, um, okay. Preparations and participation moving on, and but, we do not have a discussion for tonight, so we're moving right up, uh, uh, or item six, which is reports of officers. And then no.
Maybe, but it was only for this presentation from Megan and the fact.
Findings of fact, okay. Hope you guys have a little bit training session?
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome, good. Very thoughtful, okay, I'm good, could I have another Spanish report, say, commandment, uh, chair report, any other items from planning commissioners? It's in track of all our other committees, but I think the ZDA and the Arts of Care, you both aren't reading right now, well. Yeah, so don't update from there.
Okay, there are probably will be updates on arts, culture, heritage and art selection, because they're giving out the.
Correct.
To be the relation when it's selections.
Um, okay, anything from, whoa, wow, you're kind of, you're out of it right now, like you're. Can you think of anything in porch council last week?
Yeah, I mean, we're continuing to move forward with the fire station, um, council voted to attach three addresses to the bomb resolution language. Um, to provide flexibility for when we need to have temporary services, so one of them is this address, one of those eight one forty made, and then the D P W. So we're continuing to move forward with all that, and.
That's the question. Yeah, or I forget, I think I wrote it as a, I don't know, sometime, I don't know, that, um. There was a motion to put forward to make this a, make the location choice public.
So it was a motion on council, um, there has.
Wait, I'm sorry, what was?
Let me explain, there was paperwork filed by two members of council who were on the minority side of the location vote pool. Um, made work to put it like, to put a question on the ballot, um, they're calling it the front of Mill Creek Park. Um. If you want to know more about it, you can ask me afterwards, um, I just heard you to fact, check facts. If you see that website and um. Know that council, the, there's six of us, five of us on council, one of whom did not vote for the location that we're ultimately moving forward in. That are trying to get this done as fast as we can.
Okay, good, well, yeah, that's, I, we understand there's a lot going on with that issue, so, right, if anybody does want to give a little bit.
Yeah, I'd be happy, I mean, there's lots of detail, I can give you a timeline of events and what votes have come down and what hasn't, and what we decided has improved before all of this evolved, so. I'd be happy to, you know, point you in the direction of certain meetings, or, you know, anybody who wants to talk, call me on my cell phone, send me an email, if you have any questions about it.
Okay, thank you, and I think at one point, if I, gonna be, or if her council will put together some kind of cheat sheet over the past, like, ten years or so of all this stuff that's gone for the publics.
I do know that one of, that, um, council member all that has put together a timeline of the votes and events, public meetings, et cetera, at least in the last twelve months.
Yeah.
Which is really when we've been making all of these decisions, so that is something that's out there, but I mean, right now. What we're doing is time sensitive with the bottom resolution language and all the, you know, all the stuff that came before that, and so we haven't really done it to plans, I mean, we have had some preliminary plans, but now that we have an actual direction. You know, that's hopefully the next step to start to really, you know, focus down on what we're doing.
Yeah. Fun, okay, thank you. Um, okay, so, uh, the move is sort of initial, I guess.
So just one quick verbal update before you move, um, you all know the joyful, um, um, the shop. Closed a couple months ago, there is, I have word today, but there's going to be a new car shop that's going to be there, so.
Car shop?
Car shop, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Great, good, thank you, yeah, the question on the project update, have you ever heard any word about the distillery, distillery that, uh, the island, that was.
Yeah, they've gotten, uh, military zoning compliance for their interior remodel, and they're looking in the river. They want to be open by, um, by Dexter days, and tricky.
Okay, cool, thank you, any questions, Michelle? All right, great. Okay, moving along, citizens wishing you that permission, item seven, uh, if anybody would like to address the question, please step forward, state, any name and address. Or if you're online, raise your hand. Any, um, they can see. Hand raised, I can't see all that part.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay, and, all right, with that, moving along to the old business run, so that is just a new business, the Pelham Plan Development. Uh, conceptual review, so Michelle, you might take that first, or.
So, uh, all reviews. All of the reviews, um, um, that's what I mean, you can understand, so I mean, he's having trouble, so we'll get him. Megan, uh, O H N, D A F, and those reviews will come after, um, I'll finish up with them, but we're going to start with the applicant, to let them give you the lay of the land of what they're proposing. Um, it's slightly different order than we've done when we go to the regular quarter, even if this is conceptual. I thought that would be a good way to start this.
I'll have them go first.
You're all okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So the development, uh, the developers, the Pelham LLC, and I'll let the team come up and introduce themselves, and I'll let them explain the project.
All right, thank you.
Hi, everybody, uh, my name is Jeff Mahin, um, part of the development team, Josh Loos with me and Charlie Anderson. The three of us make up the Pelham LLC. Um, we currently have a purchase agreement with the property, if you do not own the property yet, um, but we're very interested in what we can potentially do in the town of Dexter on that property, if anyone. Um. We really spent a lot of time, um, I, I live in California, but I spent a lot of time here in Ann Arbor over the past five years. Uh, invested in a living property out, uh, Patterson Lake, um, with Kelly and all partners. And we spent a lot of time coming in and out of Dexter, spending time in Dexter, and really just appreciate what it has to offer. Um, it has, uh, it's reminiscent of a lot of small towns around the Bay area, where I live, near San Francisco. Um, has a great charm, has a great personality to it, and a great history. I think when we, when we first started looking at the project, um, we really wanted to try and do something a little bit, but, and we're really wanting to try to. Reach back and speak about the history of, of, of this location and location and town. Uh, we believe that since we're applying for a P U D, and we're trying to make this convenient. Um, we feel it's really important that, uh, we look at something very close by, that's substantial. It's a base, it's a foundation, if you will, to our building, so, um, Frederick Pelham's, uh, vibe is sort of our inspiration for the first floor of all of our structures. Uh, we'd like that level to be, uh, a mix of C M U and stone and similar martinet. There's three buildings on the property, and if you look at the front elevation, you can see that we really want to sort of mimic that, um, the vibe. And create some, really something beautiful and interesting at each entrance with glass and curved metal entryway. Um, and really allow that to be the base of the structure. Once we go up vertical, we discussed it, and each building would have a slightly different color, uh, uh, scheme, and we look at each one individually. Uh, there's phase one, two, and three, and we really would like. The phase two, one, uh, phase one building would be at the back of the property, closest to the library there, and closest to the, the bridge, um, cycles and pathway. And phase two and phase three buildings, each are sort of canted, so there's, if you're coming through the V I D from one direction, you're seeing the front entrance. Of phase two, or coming from downtown, downtown Dexter before you hit the V I D, and seeing the front entrance of phase three. Um, also, gotta create a little courtyard there, a real sense of entry onto the property. This is obviously a little different than a lot of condominium complexes, in that we are blessed with a lot of land to be a part of this process. We're expecting that the property will be developed very much, uh, like in urban park setting, um, close to town, something that's going to be quite pleasant to be. Um, to not only live there, but to be able to use the outdoor space there. So we're currently developing all of that as well. Um, we did, we looked at the project in, in a couple of different ways, and our perfect feedback was. Can this be five stories, should it be four stories, we provided a section through the town for everybody. And it reaches from the historic part of town all the way down through, um, our property, and we actually showed the library in the distance as well. Um, you can see it there, uh, the raised bridge, or, I'm sorry, the raised, uh, train tracks, um, as well as, uh, billow creek. And you can see our building is only a couple things taller, um, than, than the library, just, just in case to, to develop. So we feel like where it sits on the site, with the raised, uh, railroad, and with the distance, and the trees, and the, um. The space between downtown, we feel like it's appropriate scale to go with last stories. We're also trying to limit the disruption of the soil and taking too much soil off the property, I bring any soil in, as much as, maybe like to work with the spot that's there. Um, the architecture itself, once you leave the first floor, we really would like to have that start to relate a little bit more to the neighborhoods in Dexter. A lot of Victorian homes, the double core bell design, um, that's sort of our next phase of investigation. Spending the next week walking through town and taking photographs, getting further inspiration on the architecture, uh, as we move forward. I think for us, as a developing group, um, we're not a huge developing group, we did, uh, a building in Ann Arbor, uh, the Garnet, which we were all involved in and very proud of that project. Um, I think for us, it's about, can we make this property work? Um, at the price we need to pay to buy the property, everyone's going to take to build these, uh, units. And I think for us, it's about being able to develop the three buildings, but also sort of understanding the timeline and feedback from you guys moving forward. And how we can begin to understand that, uh, the process in Ann Arbor was incredibly extensive. The amount of time, from the time we started the process until we're now finished, we're going five years. That is not something our, uh, permit can handle. Let's just put it that way, we don't have five or six of these things happening around the country, this is our one thing, and we're really committed to it, and we really, really do want to do it, so. We're really excited to work with all of you, um, and to really actually figure what you think about it and feel about it, maybe help us understand a little bit more today. Uh, your thoughts on what that process might look like for us. And, um, the other thing I will mention, which obviously is a huge part of this, is as a P U D. Um, the one thing that we're looking to do as the public benefit is to be able to bring water to this location. Which I believe most of you are familiar with, and I know Michelle can speak about it much better than I can, but, um, that is something that we're budgeting into our project. Bringing water to the site. So, unless there's any questions, I'll say.
Well, that's good for now, we'll probably have questions, this time we'll go over to our staff, and then we'll, we'll cut you back if as needed, thank you, thank you. Okay, um.
Um, you all had a review from me in your packet, I mean, it's the highlights of, other than going through, I don't know, item, but please stop me if you have any questions. Um, just a couple of things to introduce, um, statistics, introduce the project, it's, um, one point five seven acre parcel that's eighty one eighty main, as you know, that this has been a difficult parcel. It's triangular in shape, the break field, I, it had contamination, it's been moved up, there's lots of topography going up the embankment to the railroad, there's lots of topography going down. Which is a little creek, um, and so, um, what the applicants brought forward is three buildings, each of the levels needs each, um, but also, um, the first floor is covered turfing. Um, and so that's some of the reasons for the long, the stretches of, um, the blank walls that would essentially be dating. Main Street, and the reason that, and, and there's some opportunities there, because the unique. The unique nature of the site, um, but also I think that there's some design things that, um, could allow this to be a real, um. Have a real sense of place, and will, something that's very known within Dexter, because it's right out of gateway, people coming through the V I D up, people coming down Dexter, guilty road. Um. When you look at the master plan and the zoning, this is both in village quarter. Um, and then this is a type E site, um, in reform based code, so this is the first, actually, first, uh, review, you being the adopted form base. The, uh, visiting the, as, as described in your newly adopted, um, quote. Just to even know that the intent of the village commercial, great feature use designation is to maintain well-established character, scale, identity of the traditional pattern of the approach in the original platform of the village. While allowing usage other than single-family residential for adaptive reuse of public and institutional building. Um, it planned for a transition between mixed-use districts, and have a three to five-story new multiple-family buildings as appropriate. But the master plan notes that the density should be limited by existing height and bulk and capacity infrastructure, three, two, or just water, et cetera. Um, there, um, our review, so in your packet, this is pages one sixty-four through one sixty-six, we noted a number of, um, the master plan. Goals and objectives that this, um, proposed conceptual plan would need. Um. There is some woodlands on the site, and mostly regaining the site and its, uh, locust trees, there's some large trees that are along the Mill Creek, um, bank. Um, it's not clear, it seems like those are going to be preserved, um, but really going forward, we're going to need more information on the helping trees. In order to know, um, whether they can count, and then also whether they would count towards landscaping. As you went through my review, I very saw that there were a number of things that reflected in terms of standards for the planning and development. Um, but also in terms of waivers that would be needed, um, one of the things we hope they do provide insight into tonight to the applicants, to whether the proposed design. Means the quote of both innovative land use in terms of variety of design, layout, and structure constructed, um, that's under the purpose section in the P and D. And we noted a couple of concerns to that, um, to that notion. Number one, we feel like this has a place, this, it has a real opportunity to have a sense of place, and the building speaks to that, however, um, the lighting, the landscaping. All those things that are external, um, need to be fleshed out more, um, and again, really, when people are coming in, the Dexter Chelsea Road. They'll see the buildings, but they'll also see right into this area, and feel like that should look more like a Dexter neighborhood street, rather than a heart. Um, and there are ways that you can use hardscape, landscape, in order to do that. Um, also, um, the view, uh, and so. Also some variation in materials, or colors, or design, um, looking at those things. Um, again, I've mentioned the views from Jason's speak, but what particularly concerned us was during phase one, if phase two would be or not built. What are we all looking at during that time, and is there a long period of time before that, and what, and what does the site look like in that era? Um, if you go to page one sixty-nine in your packet, you'll see a large table, um, and there are a number of waivers, um. That would be necessary, if this is conceptually laid out, one is the front for that, so that's the portion of the building that is in between the. Front yard setback and the minimum front yard setback, um, that's difficult to meet with multiple buildings, and that's part of the innovative design of this site. Um, so please provide feedback to the applicant as to whether you think those multiple buildings work. Um, and it really, the form base code also envisioned having one building with one solid building fromage across, um, so this is an instance where. The design is exceptional to what the concept was in the zoning, and then more of a waiver under the P and D. There would be waivers for the side yard setbacks, um, again, with multiple buildings, with the shape of the site, especially with the topography, it may make those things difficult. Um, the ground floor height is another one, um, and the intent of that is that the ground floor, the building should be able to be reused. So if you think of the multiple, the mixed-use buildings that you have in your downtown, um, those uses have turned over and over and over, and they have higher ceilings. So the idea in the form base code was to mimic that, however, what's being proposed here is that. It's really a space for parking, not a space that would be constructed for adaptive reuse. So again, that's something that we feel that probably meets with that waiver, because it's an innovative way to approach dealing with the parking on site. Um, in terms of building height, they're asking for a waiver, they are significantly higher than the maximum maximum building height, which is, um, which is three stories. However, planning commission and city council can grant a density waiver, um, which is essentially what you could do, but again, uh, which is essentially what they're proposing. Um. Again, in the period that it really speaks to is the design and what they're asking for, um, of the quality that, that warrants, uh, waiver of that scale. Um, and if you look again at the diagram of how tall these buildings are, they are taller than the library, um, at to scale, and they are going to peak up over that embankment. Um, and so they will definitely change the skyline of, um, downtown, and you'll see that building, um, or those buildings from various places coming along. Um, so really tonight, your input is needed on waivers, and also, it's not with the height, it's essentially a density bonus. Um, in terms of traffic impact, it will have an impact of three or four units, um, would have a weight to, um, an average of a little over ninety-six vehicle trips per day. Um, the planning commission should note that the Washington County Road Commission is planning to construct a roundabout at this intersection within the next three years. Think the idea of that, and that, and hopefully, traffic congestion that's there to begin with, um, but this would also be additional traffic that's coming into that intersection. Um, in terms of site access and circulation, it's going to be, again, it's going to be accessed by a boulevard entrance off of Main Street. Um, and we'll defer to city engineer, fire department on, um, those items, and I know they, I've noticed some things in their reviews. Um, what you should note is that the pedestrian circulation doesn't need the zoning ordinance, and will require a waiver. The zoning ordinance in the form base district requires the sidewalk to be in the entire street frontage. And I think Michelle said it in her review, and you took it all the way down, it really doesn't lead, it leads to nowhere, probably wouldn't be appropriate. Um, also, it requires a sidewalk across the entire building facade, where there were front entrances. The one, that's the phase one building, um, it doesn't, the sidewalk doesn't go the length of that building, nor would it be probably perfect, because it leads to. The dead end of the triangle, or the parcel, um. There is an issue in parking that we wanted to flag for you, they're providing fifty free spaces, only fifty are required, um, in your zoning ordinance. The required access, both the maximum and the minimum, so they're asking for essentially a waiver of your maximum by adding three more parking surfaces. I think the fire department did something about those maybe being loading spaces and also the the spaces are in the front yard technically. Again, at the end of the site where it's put up right against the embankment, it probably could be handled very well with landscaping or a mean wall. But they are asking for that. Also, they're proposing bicycle storage in each building rather than the bicycle hoops that are required. They need the parking for bicycles. It's just a different place than we're used to. Way to lock up your bike. And what I've asked for you all to look at is whether you feel like there are gas bicycle groups that would be necessary as well. Finally, on landscaping, there's a lot. It's a very conceptual landscaping plan at this, at this point, we wouldn't expect them to have a full-blown plan. But overall, we felt that the interior of the site could be approached from a perspective of the neighborhood street rather than a parking area and the green area confronting Main Street. It would sometimes have a continuation of that downtown streetscape, whether it's hardscape or landscaping or even the decorative lighting that's used downtown, we think that that would be helpful to again create that state of the same sound of place in that flow from the downtown. As I've noted before, some more information is needed about the tree preservation and the screening between users, again, because of the topography probably really isn't applicable to this property. And even if it was a straight side wind, would probably be asking you for a waiver to begin with. In this street greenbelt planning, they do meet those standards. However, because of those uninterrupted facades, basically you're seeing the sides of the building that don't have garages facing the Main Street. We feel that some landscaping, a mural, public art, a plaza could help to create that sense of space and also then still maintain that design. Something to consider. And you should give them input as to how you feel those areas should be treated. There's parking lot landscaping and we recommend those trees are planted at regular intervals at full seven street again, to kind of mimic that neighborhood street. Corridor building plantings is required. And we recommend that that landscaping be proposed at the base of all front-end buildings and facades visible from the public right-of-way. And perhaps as well as the facades of building entrances, I think to the rear of that first one, where's the front yard, the front, front entrance is facing the train embankment. Maybe that could have a left of a treatment or a different treatment that's more in keeping with the, the park-like atmosphere there and that would differentiate it from others. There's requirements for on-scape landscaping, but we recognize with the limited onsite that the, we recognize that the topography and the shape of the site, full compliance of that requirement may not be possible. And also, as you all are familiar, Dexter has a requirement for 25% of a single genus and no more than 10% of a single species. And we haven't, we're not at this level of detail here, but we just wanted to note it for the applicant and for you. In terms of exteriors and elevation, this is the site type D for the Form-based code. And that says that it, the buildings need to be distinctive and prominent architectural feature for site elements which reflect the importance of the building's location in northern history to create positive visual with a plan. With the nod to the biaduct and the nod to the historical homes. Feel like they're meeting that, but again, we want guidance from you, planning commission to the applicant as to whether you feel that they've done that, what the quality of architecture is needed, especially as this is the gateway. In landscaping, I went over this with those primary building entrances, fronting public roads. That wall, there's a reason for that dumb wall. But there needs to be some sort of design element that breaks it up, makes it interesting, something in the front yard in order to meet the standards that you have had before for development that, that the edge of downtown. And that is, and there are requirements for maximum uninterrupted building facade, which the second plan doesn't need and first order transparency. There are a number of A D qualifications, I'm not going to go through them. Generally, I think as you can see in our review, they're either possible to meet or they have been met. And what we really recommend is that you give input to the planning, to the applicant tonight about the site design and what waivers you'd be willing to look at as they go forward. And in page 178 to 179 of your packet, we have a listing of 15 of those. But if you particularly hit on tonight, building height, right down to the, the building location and site design, internal circulation, including crosswalks and sidewalks, the landscape design, and any measures that you feel are necessary when it goes to A D qualifications.
Thank you. One quick question for you, I think, before we get back. So I had a question on page 175, as you say, data required for conceptual P U D review. What exactly do you mean by that? Because it says all that information is not included. So was that supposed to be included for this that?
Yeah.
So that's, so if it's required, then if you don't have it, do we not have a leave applicant?
Technically, it's not a leave.
So I, I think just because, well, I just asked that question because I think that you may have, there may, some of that seems to have some foundation for additional information that you may base your, your guidance on. Okay, so I think again, that's, okay, well, let's go on, I guess we'll go to Michelle and then I might, we might come back to that one. Okay, okay, so I guess Michelle, are you, were you next?
Okay, so the city, or the city engineer was not able to make any sense of politics. So I'll go over kids, but if the fire department wants to go first, that
May I share some tweets? Like, do you want to go through any review or, well, if we have, we have questions. But I don't know, I have a handstand, I mean, if you've been busy.
Okay, that's okay.
Does, you got, okay, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Sure, and it's only preliminary at this point, so yeah.
It's fine.
Your consent, thank you.
So the, the Dexter Fire Department, as well as the city engineer, one of the first things that they both looked at or commented on was the water supply. We all know that the site is not, it has public sewer available, but the water isn't. And there's a couple of things that, that planning commission should be aware of and the applicant's been made aware. Water has to be run to the site, they have to have that. But they also, because it's a multiple-family, multi-story buildings, requires fire suppression. In order to have fire suppression, the system has to be moved, which means not only do they bring it to the site, but it then goes beyond the railroad biaduct to Westridge, intersection of East Ridge and Island Lake Road. I'll get more into recognizable material benefit of this project. But the one thing I will say here, and I'll say later is, this is one of these projects that's not only going, that this is going to have a requirement that ends up also being a recognizable and material benefit. I'll explain that more when we get to mine. But the system needs to be moved for the adequate flow. The engineer has provided a range of costs. This will be, both you and the applicant are aware, that's 460,000 to 570,000. It's a, it's a big price tag. These are going to also be what's over, they're going to be one of the other way. He's a, he's a really high end. So D F D is also going to want, need F D C and, that's right. Needing F D C. Each building will need one, fire department connection, thank you. And D A F D needs input on the location and relationships of the available fire hydrants. So those are engineering details that will come and become more more finalized as we get to preliminary going to final. And then the department access, this is one of the things that chief actually did call to talk with me about. He does have a concern. There is, there is definitely circulation onsite. Trucks can get in, they can get out, not a problem. However, let's say there's a delivery vehicle, whether it's an Amazon, somebody's moving in, you name it. There will not be enough room to maneuver around. And, and that's a concern for him. So what he's, his suggestion was, and what he's asking the planning commission to consider, as well as the applicant, is to consider two parking spaces that they're currently showing on site. As specific for delivery drop-offs, loading, unloading, things like that. Excuse me, whether those can be the three additional, part of the three additional that there are or somewhere else in the site. And that was one of the things that was really concerning for him. And then addressing, that's something I've worked out with them after final, when we're in preliminaries, zoning compliance. You have any questions for Mr. Ruth? By the way, I should say, Don Dudley has retired. And you know that the chief is now Chief Armstrong. And this is Ed Ruth, and he's going to be doing site plans with the chief along with
Steve Haas.
Steve Haas. So you'll see fire department coming to these meetings now and being able to answer questions. And I really, really want to pack that up and get the letters there. Okay, so the engineer, do you have any questions for fire department? So on engineers review, I've already touched on the water main. Tabbing the existing in the ant pole, there's going to have to be an alignment, again, that's a final engineering item. The federal, the applicant, no, because they're designing the site. There will need to be preliminary stormwater calculations or the underground storage, that's what they're proposing. The engine's drive was noted that it's aligned with the Washington County's proposal. That'll have to be finalized to make sure that it's actually shown on the site plan and everything is accurate as it pertains to that. The phasing, that will have to be identified in more detail when it comes to preliminary and definitely final site review so that we understand what utilities are going in at any time along with the phasing. Obviously, if the first building is the one being built, it's our back of the site. All the underground is going in, all that, again, so good for you to know that as well as the applicant. And then the engineer has identified the different agency approvals that are going to be needed for this project. Any questions?
That eight-inch main that's, that's going to be installed through the railroad right away? The eight-inch main to Westridge is, has that particular application even been forwarded to the railroad to be able to do that?
Not yet, but we already have the city engineers reaching out through M T A railroad because that will be definitely the longest portion of this getting made inside. That'll take longer than the site plan. Sorry, but yeah, we have already anticipated that and asked them to, to start getting that order.
Okay.
Okay. So when it like Megan said, you're going to have a lot of things to discuss. The way I put the plan letter together for you was the structure for your discussion. What are the things that need to be addressed specifically? You're not taking any action, you're not writing any waivers today. But you're providing this applicant with direction on what you expect to see when it comes to preliminary submission. So I provided you with just a summary of things. The application, which I'm not going to go over, Megan, with the legend, with those detail. We need pre-application meeting. That was generally well received. They were proposing two buildings, nine units each. They were encouraged to consider going higher and adding a second, a third building. So that is what they've done. It's now in your, in your board to look at how this meets the U D qualifications, how it how it satisfies everything with the master plan and how it can be, or come as close to possible, meeting P U D zoning regulations balancing the recognizable and material benefits that could be provided by the project that otherwise can't be accomplished through regular redevelopment. So let's start with the discussion items, they're on page 129. Starting with the recognizable material benefit. This is, this is, this is a redevelopment of a grade field. It looks green right now, but it was previously developed. It, it was nobody exploring, what do you, this one, this, something I can't remember, it seems a long ago. We know from the previous person that started to do some development, that they did use some sort of a communication. But it's still the grade field, that qualifies, that's one criteria for P U D qualification. The property has good whole-site conditions. Megan's outlined large embankment to the river, one that falls off into the creek and then this triangular shape to deal with. And, excuse me, the third qualification is the mitigation of off-site impacts on public facilities. So I've already talked about how this has to have water to the site. And the engineer and the fire department have also said it's got to be moved. So this line is running from Alpine Main across, no, across 8148 where the fire department is, under the creek to the site, then going from the site through biaduct and then all the way to East Ridge and Island Lake Road. It's required, they got to do it.
Not through the biaduct.
But, yeah, I call the embankment, sorry, the embankment. They, that's how the system gets looped. It's the way, it's the best of the alternatives that were looked at by the city for moving the project. That's just from a cost perspective for the city and for the applicant, but also maintenance of that system. Excuse me. In, normally, when you've seen things redeveloped in the city, we haven't had to see broader names run these long distances. The fact that this would be run all the way, or has to be run all the way to, to Westridge to move, it's lengthy, but it also does something in that process. It improves the water bill, not just for this development, but for all the development that that name services. And it opens up the possibility for redevelopment on Dexter Johnson Road. And that's something that we've talked about in planning mission, it's something the council has looked at. Nothing in-depth, but as far as future development and seeing things that you want to see on that other side has been welcome. But overall, it's going to be up to you to determine if this requirement and this benefit are sufficient to allow the the things that you need to consider making, making action at, at preliminary. So an increase in density, the base based on and setbacks, etc., are 27. They're proposing 33, that's a 22%, that's a result. The minimum front build-out, well, 75% to 32%. Megan outlined what you're looking at there. The west side yard setback from Tennessee, combined side yard setback from 27. The west side yard setback from ten to eight, combined side yard setback from twenty seventeen. Minimum ground floor, not ground floor, sorry, ground floor height from twelve to eighty. And the building height from three to five stories. The next future innovation in land use and excellence in design, et cetera. Megan was really honed in on the sense of place. Right now, it is, it is just a collection of buildings around the arc of life. But with consistent design elements, there are ways to make this look like a neighborhood and function like a neighborhood. As opposed to just three buildings and a precinct. The views from the adjacent street, again, Megan, I cited this. Excuse me, and you probably are going to talk about this in depth. What's it look like coming in on Dexter Chelsea Road? You're looking at the size of the building, is the architecture sufficient? What type of landscape do you, do you want to see? And I'm not talking about down to the details of how the species and the height and things like that. But again, comments, and then we'll develop a consensus. The site access and circulation, Megan went over the sidewalk, a street frontage, and along the building facade. Parking, is fifty three spaces too much, or do you just want fifty? It doesn't have on-street parking. Everything for, over above what we call the parking there is. Is, is going to have to walk there. The residents will have an attraction spaces, it appears. Guests will be walking. But that's. That's what we also have wanted in our demo. Bicycle parking, a storage building, forget for the residents, or do you want guests with your clients? That's something for you to discuss. Landscaping, I think it's pretty clear here. Based on what Megan has talked about, this just ran right in the specific direction. Dumpster enclosures, you've got two of them. One, one of us, the embankment on the west side. On the other side, you have one that includes the embankment for the milk creek. It's, it's, you can see it from the park. Providing the applicant some constructive feedback on what you want this site to look like. Not just on Dexter Chelsea, but also on the private rest street is. Your exterior elevations and floor plans, again. Provide the feedback regarding the primary entrances from the, from your building entrances. But on public roads, that's usually what's required. You can understand from the way Megan explained it, why they're not looking at the level of maximum uninterrupted building facade and the first floor transparency. And cultures provide you the structure you need to make your, to provide your feedback. If you've got any comments for any of us, let us screen. Does that now work together? Did it, did it consensus?
Yes. Thank you, Michelle. So, yeah, um, so we have to make it most productive for everybody, I guess. We've got a lot of issues to kind of decide on here tonight, so I don't know if we should really kind of go through them. The, both are, they're between Megan's, I think, and Michelle's, and most important kind of at this point. But we want to make sure that we give both staff and applicant clear direction, so. I think maybe at this time, why don't we just kind of start through some of the, I think you said in Michelle's. Normals as a, as a guideline. During the book, really the main items, and again, I don't think we need to have a, a common discussion on each, as long as we're clear in the direction. It can change quite a lot before we get that, so, before we get to see it again. So I guess with that, why don't we kind of, I'm looking at Michelle's review on page one twenty nine, it starts. Really, the main of the discussion items. So, and that's really the one, which is kind of the recognizable and the material benefit. And if we have some thoughts around that, really looking to, or what they're asking as well as kind of what they're providing. But I think a lot of our answers may depend on other actions that we can build upon a little bit later. But, so with that, let's look, again, there's no motion here tonight, there's no action, but we do want to give them constructive feedback. So with that, recognizable and material benefits. We'd like to hear some comments on that regarding, and I know we can jumble around, but we don't have to be really in a strict format, we never really are, but I just want to make sure we cover all this, so. With that, does somebody have some guidance, want to start our discussion on item number one for Michelle? Again, we can reference Megan's number as well.
I might say, yes, should we go off with that? The water main, the water is for the, if they. The parcel four, going to have to be done, and will be done by the developer, and therefore. There's nothing really, I think, that we can add to that. The other items listed on here. There's about six of them there, that Michelle has listed. My nature, and that's what it is. The building height, that's a concern, five stories. The, when they originally, when the developer originally came to the city, they had two buildings. Maybe five, sorry, sorry. Now we got three, no, or they've increased the number of units substantially. So couldn't the buildings come down in elevation? And still have enough units to satisfy the, the developer's bottom line as far as that goes? So to me, that's a pretty big deal, the height of the building. If I'm looking at these, and if I can continue.
Yeah, yep. Again, Chad referencing, I believe, on page one thirty, correct?
Yes, correct.
At the top.
The ground floor height, it's a deal, eight feet next to us for parking. The setback, I don't know, the setback thing to the place range. Twenty seven to thirty three units at the top on there. Fine, but as I said, I think the building's installed, back. And that would decrease those, those in the number of units. I would say, I can weigh some of that floor here. That, one of the things that was said earlier here somewhere, that there. By the way, I love the name of the development, Tellman, that is perfect. Not only did, but James Tellman do the Viaduct, but he also did the, the other crossing with the creek. So there's, there's a real connection. Having said that, wouldn't it be nice to incorporate more of the character of those two structures in your building somehow? I know you've got the architect, I've done a little bit. But, but that's all it is. Kind of token. And maybe there's a way to incorporate again, the character of those if your building looked better than what you've done. And that's kind of aside, but that does apply to.
Oh, so that's a good, no, but that's a good starter. Again, additional feedback really kind of on some of Chad's comments as well as anything additional going. On Michelle's, yeah, yeah.
I want to ask a question kind of related to height, because that was one of the things I was looking at initially with the project. From a firefighting perspective. We have the ability, and this is either for our fire representative or for Michelle. We have the ability to, so when I look at the plan, I, I want to say I appreciate the additional detail that we've gotten with this plan versus the old one, kind of the fire turns and all that kind of stuff. But one of the things I see is still worry about accessing that first building that they call phase one. In many communities that I've worked in recently, that, they would require fire access along full face of that building. And I don't see that with this plan, and I'm concerned about the height. So can you advise what the access needs to be, and what do we have to fight for to access a five-story building?
So that, we can print over, is going to be the front of the building. Generally, we're going to need a twenty six foot panter, or if we had an aerial ladder. I'm not saying that has to be parking into the sidewalk or, but it has to be able to support it. The first building, it does create some issues with us because like you said, we don't have full access to that building. But I mean, moving forward, you know, of course, it's a sprinkled, so I mean, that's trying to mitigate. I mean, we're all within more life safeties and we're more concerned than after that, than we're like, probably contain this to move on anywhere. So the parking, as I said, for aerial ladder, as for apparatus that we get up there with. Currently, we do not have anything, so we would have to call on mutual aid, which would be Chelsea or Seating or, or ladder to be up to group with it of a five-story.
What's the tallest building we currently have? And how many stories is that? Four, right? So how do we, how do we, how would we access that? Would we have call for mutual aid as well?
Yes, yes. Portland, we haven't had to.
And my understanding, when I've worked with the fire code, is that you need this access across the full face of a building within fifteen to thirty feet from that access point.
Yes.
And I don't see that for building one.
Yeah, any corner, it does get very, when it's following, I don't know, it's very tight. So again, I'm not sure they actually spell out what, fire suppression, they were kind of looking at there's.
So if you call for mutual aid, or let's say you had to fight a fire in this, you would be fighting it with ladders and some mutual aid came. And you're covering the first couple of floors, and that, that's similar, you would have to do that for the monument part building.
Yes, correct.
And that, that's my concern with it. I'm, I'm concerned that we're going down a path for a building that may not meet the fire code standard when we get into this further. The height is interesting, because I think I had a point out at the last meeting, where this sits in relation to other buildings in your section, where they kind of show that is. It works with all that, so I think that's an interesting situation. I'm just concerned that we don't have proper access to that building. I'm fine with the extra three spaces, like the fire folk said, maybe make them delivery spaces so that people aren't in the way there. I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the dumpster moved from adjacent to Mill Creek. I'd like to see some unifying, Megan mentioned the unifying elements, and Chuck, you also mentioned, like, could the structure incorporate that more? I'd like to see that a little bit more. I'd also like to see the sidewalk run across the full frontage, because I guess someday, I'd like to see if we can't get over or under the railroad with pedestrians, maybe a light there that a pedestrian could hit a button, and the light would turn red, and they could go under the viaduct and cross. So I'd like to see the sidewalk extend just for future opportunities there.
Could I ask a question over there?
Yes.
Would the planning commission be amenable to a, a payment to the sidewalk fund for the future? So it didn't get built until there was that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I swear to God, whatever. And I, I don't think if you're coming from the west to the site, to the Viaduct, that you're really going to notice the site until you're at the entrance kind of thing, but you sure are going to notice that going out of town. So I think we got to pay attention to what the building orientations are as you're coming from town and coming from the south into it, and what that looks like. I, I've done some conceptual layouts on a couple of properties lately, working with the new code. And I struggle to get the building frontage percentage and have access into the site, so I can appreciate kind of that and how that happens, so. And especially here, when we're putting a roundabout in and how that access would have to happen there. And for clarity, currently, the developer is proposing to pay all the cost for the water main. And there's no discussion currently about any foregoing of connection fees or anything like that. So if you take that price and allocate it over the three to thirty three, it's like, what, sixteen thousand dollars a unit for the water main? And then another ten grand for connections, so it's like twenty six thousand dollars per unit for utility.
Eight thousand dollars, thirty nine.
Okay.
Water into the ground.
So, twenty eight, do I math there? Twenty eight, can you do thirty two thousand? Do you have it right? Twenty four thousand, sorry, twenty five thousand, a lot of money per unit. So I can, I can understand why they have the third building and actually.
Well, I, I really like this project. I, I think we always talk about density and, and all that, suburban projects, and now we have one in front of us. And I hope we don't start pushing it towards a suburban model, which is, happens often, I think, here. Um, the, the idea of, like, I can't, you know, loading space is kind of driving me crazy, because that's, they're in the orange, so. We can, you know, we're going to have a, as far as the colors of the building, maybe look at the library, there's, there's kind of a rich color, color in the library, and for us, context, build whatever, something will gather. I, I, I disagree with some of my colleagues about the fire issue. I think that's, that's all code stuff, you guys are going to comply with what the code says. You're going to be a high-rise, you're going to be subject to high-rise requirements, and that's going to take care of all fire stuff. I mean, that's, that's, fortunately, that's not a zoning issue for us, I don't think. It's a building department issue, working with the fire department. Really excited about the density, I mean, other communities are, are creating more density in their communities for a lot of different reasons. And it tends to make communities healthier, bringing people downtown. The, the traffic is irrelevant to me, because residential traffic, traffic is typically distributed throughout the day. So saying a ninety six trip, when you stretch that out for day, people coming and going. It really, it's, it's way different than like a manufacturing building, or an office building or something like that, that has work hours where everybody comes and goes. So I, I, I don't see the traffic at all. The, the height, I, I think the height is awesome. I think it's, it's going to fit right in that site very, very well, it's going to be tucked back in there. I really encourage you to have some renderings that show what this, what it's going to look like, and build some excitement around there for the community. I think of the context of a library, and you, you know, the views around that site are just terrific. So I think it's going to have a great project. I, I would, I would encourage you to reconsider the twelve foot, the first story, because long terms, with like the project, the twelve feet might, if you could push the whole project a little taller. The twelve feet might benefit you. Through the light. But, but I also agree with what Chad said, that eight feet is, is more than sufficient for parking for, for that purpose. I think your parking strategy of having guests, use street parking is solid, we see that every day in our sites. Again, it's not a, it's not a suburban model where you have a big parking lot in the back, that's not what this is. And I don't think we should try to make it that. Way to go, excited for you.
So, so I'm going to bring us back a little bit, also, jumping around a little bit, but that's okay, we can focus back to some of the items within Michelle's model, and make sure we catch them all, but. No, actually, let's move to Karen and then Tom, if you have a question.
Well, I, I actually have more comment, man, I, I think it's, I like the project. I'm not bothered by the height at all, just mainly because the land goes down and the height, just that, that it just won't, I don't think, I don't think it'll tower over the city. And short term, it's all kind of funny, down, down the ramp, you know, dip, and you got a little building down, or a little set of buildings. So I'm good with that. My main concern is the view from the park and the library. When I first looked at the first, the first rendering, I thought, oh, that's cool, and I was like, my. When I first looked at the first, the first rendering, I thought, oh, that's cool, and I was like, my, the way that they're bearing windows, and I thought. Oh, maybe they could mimic the, the sort of, the paint job over the bakery and those kind of things, it'd be really cool. And I'm not a big fan of trying to create nineteenth century, really, now, just like, it's very hard to do well. Um, but. When I just looked at time, whether it's the four, um, you know, elevations or whatever. They, the back, the one facing the tree, looks like the back of a building. And. I, and I fooled around as best I could, was trying to find some way to. This is, I, well, they only, what I came up with, but I don't even know that it would work, but finding some way to push. The, uh, building's wanting to away from the, uh, creek a bit. And put in, make the sidewalk go, make that the front door. So, that way, you're looking, because the front door is, you know, it looked good, and I thought, oh, good, and I hope people are attracted into the drawing. Then, um, you know, um, and then I looked at the back and I thought, uh-uh, I don't like that a bit, and I. I think the way, the way I was thinking about it, is I don't think the site is big enough. To constitute, it don't neighbor, I just don't. But what I do see it as is, when we think about the sort of function or purpose of, you know, form-based zoning, is to create. That the, the buildings define a public space. And the public space is really the city, and I, I just think that would, it would make it work much better. And the only way I can come up with it, and it's probably not feasible to be moving building three closer to the street. Because I, there's, that, that little bit of grass there is not gonna do much, so that there's enough room to push building. Well, in particular, it's building two, building one, I think is a little easier to push, not, maybe we have to. So that even, it's like the walk is a problem, and even though it's not a public walk, and it's, it's got nowhere to go for the public. It will create, um, I think, a sense of parallel law, and there's a stretch on the Col, um, Col, the Chicago River. That every time I take the architectural tour, which I do every time I go to Chicago, um. I always look forward to it because they handled that kind of problem really, really well, with the way that they've structured the law. And, I mean, this isn't comparable in size or scale, but that's, I think that would make a huge difference. And then, because otherwise, all the decoration, all the, you know, ornamentation, it's just for the buildings to look at each other. It's not gonna do, it's not gonna change anything for the city, I mean, I'm, I'm not as worried as like, uh. Zach was worried about the, looking at, you know, seeing the. Uh, garage doors, you won't see them if they, if building one and two are built, and building three is on the other side. So I, I just don't see that, I do agree that, to make, maybe some effort to make that kind of a something. You're glad to see, but I, you know, when you talk about leaving the city, when people, you know, people, I think it's right, they're gonna come in and, you know. You're so thrilled you got through the underpass, that, you know, you can work on what's around you, but going, going out. We'd be looking at the back of the building. And I think that would be getting the stake.
Additional, we might as well just keep going, and this time, but then we're gonna come back, probably, and make sure we address everything else, but, but we'll keep going along with our thoughts, we should go with it. Um, so, oh yeah, Tom, wait, that's your name, Tom?
I, I just want to be clear, I do like the height, I do, do like the number of units and everything, I'm just cautious about. The fire code or the fire access here, I don't wanna have this come back and be different, like. With fire access lanes to the building and those kind of things, so my question pound is, with regard to high-rise. Would you help high-rise, um, fire code, or can you describe some of the things that are different? Or might be different with their?
Uh, it, the, the code speaks to access, not to drive, so the presumption is that if you can get to it. Uh, the fire department will, will figure that out, it, it's, uh. It's been kind of, uh, reinterpreted over the years, uh, sometimes about the difference between. Um, access to something and, and a, uh, a drive. Uh, you know, we hear all the time, our department's asking for loops around buildings, right? Saying, well, how are we gonna get to it, and that's not the way the code is written, the, the, the code speaks to access. So in that context, I, I guess, I, I haven't looked at it lately, but I would, I would think that, um. The way the, the, the site lanes currently depicted, that probably is okay.
And that, that's different because of the height, right?
Right, over sixty feet, before sixty feet, I, I guess I'm assuming it's higher, or, or sixty feet, it's higher than that shit.
Alright, thank you, that's great.
Additional, um, yes?
Okay, yeah, it doesn't need your comments. Um, I, I also, I think in general, and fine with the height, I would also like to see the underground company, Tom. Mention, I think it would help alleviate any concerns on that. I am sympathetic to the fire department, if they don't feel like having to call on mutual aid to degrade. Yeah, I think that we should be building things that we can support with what we have or what we can plan to have. I think that, no, I, I don't support putting sidewalks all the way to the viaduct, I think that's to potentially encourage. People to try to run underneath the viaduct and get on the other side, maybe encourage some. Unsafe behavior, but I like the idea of either putting it into the sidewalk fund. Or putting in a development agreement that they pay their fair share of spending it at the time that sidewalk is viable, yeah.
Okay, additional, since we're jumping kind of around for now, we'll have to come back to my list, yes? You will know, yeah, sure.
Um, I am.
We're getting down into these other questions. Yeah, we are here, but that's okay, we'll come back, and so please, obviously pay attention, we're gonna come back to the main list.
There is a, the first comment and the next one that sets a place thing, is important in there, one of the. There's a number of things that, relative to this site, are extremely important to me, and one of them is that. I see this as a piece of property where a pre-designed building, three pre-designed buildings have been more or less. Put in there that, as opposed to designing a building for the stay. And, um, first of all, that, not real comfortable with that. The, um, I think a solution to a few of the problems would be if unit number one. Were pushed back towards the railroad, in line with unit three. And then both of the drives into those buildings would be facing each other. And that would still allow views, plus that would put the face of the building facing the river, rather than the back of it. I think also that maybe some consideration would be given to shrinking. Unit, uh, two, a little bit, so that it opens up some space between the buildings for that center place there. Right now, it's all game, it's just parking, and if you could create some space there that was not only visible from the other side. No creek, but also is a space where people can look down and see something over the parking, I think that would be a tremendous. Um, a, a change, I know it increases the number of units and all of that. Um, I am also quite concerned with the. Build, or the, the ends of the buildings that face the road basically. And I don't know what you can do about that, um, quite honestly. But I think some major effort ought to be getting done through the architecture, I don't know what it is. So that what the people coming from Dexter, Chelsea, for instance, aren't looking basically at the ends of the building. But I don't know what can be done in that regard, but that to me is a concern, and landscaping is important, and all the other things have been mentioned, but these are tall buildings. And it sounds like five-story is fine, um, so, that's what I'll say. Now, not totally, if you're, you're going into a roundabout now, which is a little different than just driving straight into it, you're gonna be. You know, you're gonna be maneuvering around the roundabout with changes. And your awareness of what you're looking at, both any direction you, you go. By the way, my major thought was that maybe some shifting of the buildings on the site slightly. Uh, would help a lot, and by the way, in regards to fire access, if both of those buildings backed onto the railroad. Then there's plenty of room for fire access down the face of that building all the way down. Um, so that would, that would solve that problem, right? You know.
I, I, I would, I would caution the applicant, that what, I, I think one of the things you're hearing is, is a lack of information that people are, are. Making judgments about your project because you don't have any rigor is, and are talking about what it looks like from their imaginations. And looking at the two-dimensional line drawings, which is not a good, you know, next Thursday, for you. And, and there, there's not many people that, that look at the buildings in Dexter in general, who are worried about what side of the building at. It's a, it's a, it's a composition of the building, and the overall design is important. And depending whether it's the back of the site or whatever, a building's capable of presenting well in all those elevations, it's just a matter of. How you portray that, the planning commission.
Oh, yes, can I move you? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's your hand, yes, and then Kyle.
Rare is the project, the Kyle Marshall and I seem to be on the same page, which we both like. It's a very unique site, and I think you've done, you, you're off to a really good start on this site. Um. I hope you'll take the comments here tonight as an effort to. Give you ideas, and to sort of encourage you to come back to us. Um, with what you think is a project that reflects your original vision. Perhaps melded with some of the comments we've given tonight, but I wanna start off with, um. I really think you've done a great job, Jay, with starting, it's a unique site, and, you know, you, you're not the first site. You're not the first developers to come to us with a project for the site, and this is, in my opinion, by far the best perspective project we've seen for this. To touch on the things that have been said tonight, I, I can't echo. On more, on, we talk a lot about high-density development. And now we're presented with a high-density project, and I think it's really important that rather than, um. Throwing obstacles in front of it, or trying to get it to a perfect place, we say, here's a high-density project. Let's give some feedback, but let's open, let's also be open to what we get back in return from the developer. Um. A couple of things I've heard here tonight that I'm really, um, I think you should, can, can, can really encourage you to. Chad's idea of moving, um, building two back against the railroad, I think is something you should really consider, but, building one.
Yeah, building one, yeah.
Building one is something you should really consider, you have to realize that we are very, um. Responsible to public feedback here, and when I first saw this project, as much as I liked it, what I'm really afraid of is that. When it comes, when push comes to shove, and we have to have public comment on this building, we're gonna get a lot of people from the city of Dexter. Coming and giving some pushback to what's essentially creating a canyon right up against the river. I think if you push building one back against the railroad, you sort of head that off a little bit. Um, I'd like to also say that I would be, if you push building that one back. I would be open to more height on building three and building one, in return for less height on building two. So again, sort of avoid that canyon effect on a river which people are very protective of. Um. I'm not concerned about the fire and stuff, I think we can work that out, I'm not concerned about the view from the street, I think it's overstated. Um, I'm open to more density and more units, if you can figure out a way to do that, that, that the city agrees with. I think you'd be surprised if the planning commission might agree with you as well. Um. I should take your feedback from us and try to incorporate it, come up with whatever you think is the best way to go forward. I would just encourage you to think about two main things. This planning commission is generally open to density, and, and especially on the site. But at the same time, at some point, we're gonna have to face the community, and that community, this community is gonna be super protective. Of that river view from the park, take those things and incorporate them into your business.
That's what you've got to follow. It's true, though, I mean, generally, I like it, um, I think we all kind of do. And I had comments a while back, it was about some of the circulation into the parking, uh, going across the. So that seems like it's all been addressed nicely, the different, uh, you know, we're using the stone on the first floor. And changing materials and, you know, it's coming along very nice, um. Um. I actually differ from probably most here, that I'm a little concerned about the height. I'm a little concerned about the height.
Of everything all there is?
Like, it's a story to tell. And the only reason I say that is because you're already ten feet lower in that part than this property. Now we're gonna go basically sixty feet in there, in there, so you're in this park. Like, commissioners, go down there and just think, like, a tree is like, if it can talk. That's how big this thing is gonna be, right up on the parking lot, over the park, so somebody said, maybe it was you, you said about moving potential. And Chuck had an idea of maybe pulling that second building back, so we've only got, have one large thing here. I don't know if the numbers were, uh, story lower, though, so, it's. Anyway, that's the height, I'd definitely love to see, okay, another thing with the height, it's the only tall thing around, like, the railroad bridge may be up ten feet. But the river's down, but like, the Jeffords and Monument Park and stuff, there are other. You know, two, three-story buildings around, gonna mitigate this height change, we're going for nothing. Oh, you're driving in Dexter, Chelsea, and then all of a sudden here's. Very large. Okay, so that was something, and he's right, it may come out with community input, it's a whole thing. Okay, the other thought I had is that Chuck, I, I was looking for the way to say it, and I think Chuck did a really good job of articulating it. Is that it does, and I know you're early, you're conceptual and stuff, and you just copy and paste it, and you're trying to find a typology that works. And that's okay, too, but I do think that. It, that third building, to me, it's that building one in the back. And when you come into this site. You're seeing the two sides of the two front buildings, and they're, they're addressing each other, and now this third building. Entrance is on the side and you're looking at its side, and to me, it would create a, a better, you know, these buildings. They're not necessarily relating to each other in a wrong way, but if that third one. If we could, if it was turned or, or rearranged somehow, or maybe that's, these two can be the same building. But this third one is unique, because it is in that pie shape, and it's, uh, you know, there's an entrance there, we've got two buildings, and then. You know, they're all creating this courtyard in a way to each other, they're just being kind of all, just next to each other. Not, kind of related. But that would be my kind of suggestion for that, then there were some things on the parking, and, you know, the circulation, so maybe the building faces everything. And now this way, the whole, the way this road is sculpted, it kind of starts to take shape. That's building arrangement. I also wanted to say that, I'd like that we're activating the pedestrian connection to town. I don't know if there'd ever be any kind of, I don't know if parks would ever go further, or what, but it seems like. It would be great to be able to walk into this thing and then like, back into the park over like a pedestrian bridges, and. You see, like, this, right now, I feel like if I'm walking into this place from town, now I feel like. now I feel like I've I've done a bad thing and now I'm here where I don't necessarily belong. And I'm going to just go away pretty quickly. You see, there's not, you know, and that's fine, the people who are living here are going to walk, but not that you have to be like this great pedestrian destination, but you see. That's. Water there, that's great. I think my my major thing is at this point, about that passing, buildings kind of relating to each other. The rest we can figure out, but. Okay, yes. Yeah, I came to dominate. No, okay, that's fair enough. No, that's okay. Important discussion.
I wonder about the possibility of building unit three first rather than unit one first, then you're going to have to deal with that space in between now, I mean, all the way back there initially. And if you just, if you, if that were the building, that's the one you would keep going on. I mean, that would be the one of the small products. And um on you, as I say, you would have to deal with how you get back to that back building, you know, you know, which will be there for a while unless you, let's just say in those gangbusters, you'll begin building your own. By the way, that's a thought and maybe impossible.
Yeah, I think you have a lot of. Yeah, sure.
So I agree with Chad about potentially pushing building one back. I don't think it's our role to tell you what's based. That's your developer. That's your job and what I do. Um. But again, I think you know, if you hear Kyle's comments, again, I would just say consider taking building two down the board and figuring out, give us a proposal to put more units in density in the other two buildings, pushbacks against the tracks. Because the last thing I want is for us to, we know this community. The last thing I want is for this board to like your project and to come to a public meeting in which two dozen people turn out and they're like, you can't build something this tall right against the river. Um. I don't know that it will happen, but again, for context, Kyle and I are not always on the same page and we both have this serious concern, so just think about it, I would say. That's all you said. He always waits till the end and now he's going to say wise things.
Well, wise, but um, no, I I agree. And overall, I like the project. Uh, I don't have an issue with density. I agree. It's an extremely problematic site. It's not a cheap site and it's not easy. Um, but of course I do have concerns. I mean, I think somebody did say, I think Chad has been echoing this a lot, too, but one of my biggest points on this is a sense of place. And it does look to me that the buildings were just, I I know as far as the design, you used the art in the phone, but it doesn't look like they were designed with any layout to the site, to the creek within mind. It looks like they were just put there. And one thing I want the planning commission to keep in mind, I don't necessarily have a height of the five stories, but remember that bank is going to be cleared and this is going to be 60 feet on the edge of that. So I echo the strong the the bank that, right now, we look, if you stand in Mill Creek Park, you look across those trees there. Most of those trees are gone. So I I think I echo the strong concerns and comments about, I don't know about five stories on that creek. I I don't know that I can, that's that's a lot. And one also thing to remember is these are right on the property line of the creek. They're right on the edge of the bank. One, I don't know how you're going to construct that necessarily, but two, it it's right on that bank. So remember all those trees will be cleared. So I think lower, there's no step back is. And that's another thing where I think they're it's just a path of a regular condo that could be overlooking a field. There's no, I think Karen said where there's some front or at least like a walkway, something, it goes to the sense of place within that site. I think there is nothing that you have anywhere on that site for somebody to walk around, even on that site, if there's a place for the bench or internal sense of place. I mean, there's been dumpster overlooking the creek.
Yeah.
I I I can't. So again, I know this is flimmer and you're juggling with a lot of things, but I mean, that can't batten that dumpster overlooking the beautiful creek. Um, so I think moving that building back, creating more of an open space, a path for even those people in those buildings that want to live there, that can walk through that site, where now they can't. They they go to the parking lot and then I guess that'll tell them. Shifting those buildings, again, they're right on that edge of that hill. They're right there. Um, another thing about phase one or building one, we're calling it, I think you've got a cram in that corner. I don't know how you're ever going to get to access where that landscaping is in that triangle part because you only have 4.8 feet between your property and then building. And then on the other side, the building right on the side and bank. So I don't know how you're ever going to get into that triangle there. I mean, that could be an area where it could be cleared out for some benches and a sidewalk or something for the people, the resident, not publicly, for the residents that live there. Um, again, you've got this beautiful, and it's only being used by the people that are going to be in those units. Um, I disagree with some of my commissioners again on the frontage. I think that this that is a thigh facing main street. A prominent main street, again, 50, 60, or five story building right on main street with with just a side. Um, aside, there should be some kind of front element there and I think it's possible. That speaks to the sense of place, that speaks to looking to the community and integrating that into that. I think not just putting these buildings that could have been put in a green field, so the exact same relation to their sites there as they have there. Um, the sidewalk along the frontage, I think that is important to at least put into the front because the the county is going to put that roundabout there. There's a good chance it could be a crosswalk. The county usually brings it with sidewalks. I think that's huge to put at least to the front across the driveway to spell that sidewalk because there's probably going to be crosswalks there. The A and W is there. Your residence would be perfect. Your residents can walk to the A and W safely. So I mean, I think that's like a no brainer to me. Um.
The world will, yeah, the world will be crossing um the east side.
On the east side. Well, they may end up putting on both sides, but okay, that's that's ultimately determined. Um, you know, that kind of touches on a lot. And again, the density, I don't have an issue with the density. It's just kind of, I think, the way that the buildings are necessarily designed. And again, I think pushing the height a little bit more towards the rail track, I love Cheff's idea. That was echoing as far as shifting that building one over a little bit, faces the garage it's at. And it can create a community area for your residents that I think is only a select feature to utilize that part, that where all the residents could walk along that and maybe, maybe there's a slight little side sidewalk. Look at uh, like, well, there's a lot of projects that kind of do that. That can present two fronts. They they can do that. It's that's not infallible. Um.
So yeah, you touched on something that I have to come up with one when you're doing, I'm going to interrupt you because I'm going to have you guys.
Yes.
Pull something together. You've been able to create a visual and we talked about the sidewalk on the creek side.
Yes.
Buildings. Um, taking into consideration some of the comments that Megan Hammond heard report about those additional elements, site lending. Um. Do you, do you, does the commission, do you like the idea of that that sidewalk going along the bank, maybe having similar street light or street lights, better than street lights like what we have down south? Is that the kind of look you see in your mind as you're in?
Wouldn't that be nice? Because then you can walk in and do the loop, walk back out, you know, through pedestrian.
That's what I'm wondering if that's what you're saying and how you all feel about that.
I don't like the idea of decorative green lights. It's a residential site. For the lonely topic that you're asking.
Well, yeah, I don't want to get in the way too much as a D M.
I think that's why I just.
I don't think that's our role.
Okay.
I do like the idea of a wall. I do think it's funny that we've been together long, but I didn't bring up the dumpster because I knew 100%. No, you got somebody else. You were bringing up that dumpster. Guys, just so you know, this plan is not passing this planning commission with that dumpster. He's not letting them have it.
I didn't bring up.
I knew I didn't want to, but again, like, everything you're hearing here, they're ideas, like your project. Like, please don't, please don't, right, please don't feel like we don't like a project. I know we don't get everything we want. I know we have different ideas. Um. You know, it's everybody here loves this community and has a vision for this community and.
I need to work.
Right, we want to make it better. We just want to make the project better.
And I think, again, I think it helps to ultimately, one other, um, uh, you know, I think, again, if if the density is, I think we, that's one of our questions here as far as the density, but also remember as a planning commission, I know we say we always push high density one, but that doesn't mean we have to give away that density for his, whatever brings to us. It means we have to be better. And remember the standards here, the bonuses, they are getting a density bonus for innovative creative design. It's not just a buy right. I mean, we do have a choice here in the planning commission to make, to come up with an, to give them the density that they need to make a project properly, because I get it, it's not easy to make money in in development right now. However, you are getting a significant density bonus here for something that I think is ultimately makes your project worthwhile and want. Um, I'm not going to, we're not going to make you electrify it, pull it up natural gas, we're going to do crazy. Things like that, like some of these things. But we just want something that I think is overall better for your residents as well as the community. Again, this is a concern. Look into the creek. I want everybody, you got to go to that Mill Creek Park and look up there and look at five stories over there. I'm not against height, but maybe even stepping it back or again, pushing it towards the railroad tracks, um, which you do have residents across that, I get. Okay, and I think um, those are my main concerns, uh, that I think were echoed by some and not all. Um, so I want to make sure that we get some of our, uh, let me reorient myself here. We uh, we answered some of the questions to give the applicant. Again, we've given them some direction. Uh, as far as I think we've covered, what that began to increase in density, most of us generally see seeing fine, but I think that even the flexibility in some of those setbacks, again, given the right project, I think you're hearing favorable support from that. Uh, also including the height. You're going to have basically generalized support, I think, for that, given um some fine tuning of possible placement on items like that. Um, the sense of place, the envy and number two, Michelle's number one going through, um, did give you some feedback, I think, on that? There's anything else that wants to add to that? Um, yeah.
I was essentially asked this, but I would like to get a little fellow planning with feedback of if they were willing to do what Chad asked and put one against the railroad and if they're willing to take building two down, which Kyle and I talked about, would people be in favor of giving them more density on building three and one if they could come up with a way to do that?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I I don't, I don't know. Even if a commission that's necessarily appropriate, I mean, if there's general feedback, I think there's support for density. If it can get there, but I caution too, because I don't know how much more density you could put on the site without massively. I don't think we can see a seven story building there and if they take off stories. Yeah.
Yeah, I I propose the planning commission redesign your site and redesign your buildings. I I think you're, what you're hearing is tension, in my humble opinion, again, about suburban nature and this idea of high density and people's entire suburbs back dealing with more suburban buildings sometimes. And and in that, you know, words like canyon and all that, that's all about nervousness of of the kind of urban high density that we say we want and then we see it and we say, well, that's high and it's a canyon and it's a, and we invent words for it. And again, it, with without any kind of images of how you see your project, you're you're asking us to really give you design feedback that we may not be uh actually equipped to, so.
That's fair, a clearer visual the next time you throw them apart would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
So, yes.
So what Tom says is accurate. It's 100% accurate, but it comes from a place that one of the things we deal with most is frustration is we we have a little more education here about development than public generally does. And what we're, what what you're hearing mostly is anticipation of what we're going to hear down the road. And so Tom is right in that a lot of these comments reflect tension between our desire to have high density development and I would say the generic desire of the generic residents to have nothing to do with. And so.
Well, that's not unusual to hear. So it's it's fair what Tom says. Um. And it's a challenge. Yes, it is always a challenge. Um, okay, going back to my list here, site access and circulation. Um, in general, we heard some various feedback on that. I think across that one, parking, we didn't discuss a lot about that, but I'm really fairly comfortable. I think I didn't hear a lot of feedback on the parking other than screening it properly. Yes.
The idea of getting away or eliminating the three additional spaces which aren't even required.
Oh, yeah, I would be supportive. I would be supportive, especially because they're in the front, absolutely. Yeah, and the circulation area. And you do have plenty. Bicycle parking, I guess, is fine internal, but that's not, we'll let that, that's not internal. Um. Okay, yeah, landscaping is really kind of too early, I think, to really get a lot of feedback on landscaping other than.
If you had something specific that's voluminous, if not, we can go down.
Just necessarily things, though, we heard adequate screening, so. Dumpster enclosures, again, that's, I think, kind of, I don't think goes, it goes without saying, we had some feedback on the dumpster location. Which um, and that's for your elevations and floor plans in general. I get, I think we heard, we heard feedback on that. Are there anything else regarding the elevations? Although it was a tricky one. Uh, for us to analyze. Thirty-two, let's see, going to the primary hall, but, but well, again, so this is something I did want to uh touch on, make sure we, regarding the form-based standards, because we did, you know, obviously, we did go to the form-based code really recently. Um, this has some icons which obviously does not comply with. Um, so we do, we should give some feedback. I mean, I, of course, I'm, it's like, it's a little concerning in the first project we see, we're granting waivers. But then again, I, I think we all know this is a different kind of site. It's not like it's right next to something else that's going to be developed. So I, I mean, I think, again, it feels funny to be allowing us to go around a code we just created to not do this, but I I think we've all kind of looked at the site as a bit of an anomaly in this. Um, do I have any other concerns?
I I think the form-based code needs to be kind of living back in a sense. We got to learn from it.
You learn from it.
We're finding, if you guys think zoning designs, buildings, parade, go look at 101, 102 and what that was designed, I think, uh, planning permits.
That will work.
You're right. Well, if you love that, that'll be good, but I think that, you know, we have enough self-awareness to say that um the form-based code may not be.
That may not be suitable. Yes, agreed. I think we all agree. Um, Michelle, go through your list. Uh, while I'm going through this list, is uh, again, additional feedback, they're early enough in the in the project here where we can throw these ideas at them. I know they've obviously got time and money invested in it, but this is what they're here for. Um. Matt, okay, I don't know if we're looking at, I covered everything, Michelle.
You covered everything.
The planning, site, density, density, regulation.
I have two questions for you.
All right, okay.
So um, one, you should um ask the applicant if they feel they have clear direction on you. Um, the second thing is, although Megan is right, they didn't have everything on their conceptual plan that the ordinance states. I'd like to hear what the planning commission's thoughts are on that, because from a staff's perspective, it it doesn't seem that it's necessarily necessary to make them bring back if they revised conceptual plan, if you were able to give, if you were able to understand what they were proposing and you were able to give them feedback on what they should provide you with the preliminary plan.
Hmm, there's another question. Is the conceptual step required?
Yes, it's the required step.
So are you essentially asking us? Do you think they have enough feedback to just come back to the final plan?
No. No, what I'm asking is, are you feeling the need for them to provide you with a revised concept plan in order to provide clear feedback before we go, before they go to a program?
Is that an option? Or not, like, in our, since it's a newer project, plus the concept review?
It's always an option. Is it unnecessary?
Right. I mean, I think if 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 we advocate, I mean, we, so we obviously gave you a lot of feedback and. I mean, I think if 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 we have, I mean, we, so we obviously gave you a lot of feedback and. Couple different directions, but I think in a lot of ways, we're pretty much on the same page. So I don't know. I think if. If you guys, a couple of Michelle's questions, feel, do you guys feel like you have enough direction at this point? And if not, or if you do. Do you?
And then feedback that they have that you want, but it's not.
Yes, and also would you want to come back to as a pre-concept or do you feel comfortable now? I think that's not a decision you have to necessarily make right now. Um, I think you can probably let Michelle know shortly if you want to come back for either pre or P U D concept meeting. Or just launch into your preliminary reviewing things. There could be some benefit to either way. Um, so with that, uh, you, you guys have additional questions for us that we can, again, summarize as a board for you? I mean.
I do not. I juggle these things all the time over architects, so I'm hearing everything and in my opinion. I don't think we should until we got the visuals, like we just talked about a few minutes ago.
Yeah.
To me, the visuals is gonna resolve a lot.
Probably, yes.
We all can talk about it now. I think we'll resolve it. So I think there's things that we know we need to do, but I think that the addition of visuals really helps. I don't think we need to.
Okay, and again, you don't have to make that decision now. You can feel free to get Michelle input at that time. Yes.
That's an opportunity. Like, if they go through this and they think there's more risk because it changes, they're making, they can come back and do this again.
Yes, they can. So I think you just have to make sure you put Michelle on scheduling. I have no idea.
I agree. If I could, if I could, I would support coming back with this before you get into your formal supplemental types of documents, something along this level. Based on what we just talked about today, if you can accommodate what we've been talking about today, I'd like to see that myself. Prior to the landscape plan and all of the other things that you're gonna have to provide at some one time. Um. But early on here.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I would echo that just because, again, I think that you are, you do keep hearing the interest in this committee to keep that, that we have this. Like the project, in general, but we have concerns. I have concerns, so I think it may.
Let me show quick, say.
Sorry, I got three hands up now. Okay, wait, who, Michelle?
Let me think.
Why don't Michelle go there?
There's a, there's a. We're talking two different things. I'm asking if you. The information that they provided that's required. Versus the information that's required that wasn't provided.
Right.
Do you feel that we need a revised conceptual plan in order to understand what this project is? What you're asking for is slightly different.
Right.
And that's what we've done is from the part of the preliminary. So I think it's a careful nuance, but I think it's important for staff, it's important for the applicants to know.
Yeah.
What your expectations are. Um.
I I would hate to get bogged down, but from my perspective, in crit- critiquing a landscape plan at this early stage.
So you don't, you don't do detailed landscaping and preliminary. You get a flavor again, the details come in the final.
So I think it's a certain risk. Like I said, you don't, you need to, but you could come back with that. But but wait, I want to ask, was your question, because Michelle also asked us. About the required, the required data that they're missing.
Yeah, I looked at the list and nothing, if that stuff had been included, it would change it very significantly. And that's my feeling with that. You know, to ask them to come back, if they want to come back, if they wanted a second.
That's different.
That's different, but I don't think we should.
I don't think you need to come back to provide this data, although I think if. Is this required? Then we should figure out if it's required or not, because it seems weird that if it's required, then we're saying it's not, but. That's a stubborn pattern. But yes, Tom.
I agree with that. I don't need anything further. That's up to you guys if you have any more. Can I ask one question that wasn't related to the information that we're talking about specifically?
Yeah.
I noticed in the site data chart that you are proposing two bedroom and three bedroom units throughout the whole development. Is there a reason why you hadn't considered different unit types, like maybe a one bedroom or studio or something that would?
Efficiencies, yeah.
Yeah, so we are still thinking about that and considering it. We're considering limiting the number to three bedrooms and potentially doing more two bedrooms with a co- co-let room or maybe a one bedroom. So that's not out of the question to this point. That's. We were wondering if there's gonna be any sort of feedback in today's meeting that might help us with that. That is a bigger image.
Uh, yeah, I'd I'd like to see some other opportunities than two bedroom, three bedroom units, so. Um. But I understand that there's market drivers in those signs that practice too, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. You did have your hand, and Karen, you did have your hand up. I'm sorry.
First of all, I appreciate all of the discussion tonight and the comments are very, very helpful for us. So this is. This is a great process. I work with a lot of municipalities and this conceptual stage is awesome for us. So thank you all for the discussion. Um, and Michelle, can you speak to a little bit of the next timeline of events and what like the preliminary. P V application looks like and then from there, because one of the challenges we have as the developer is managing the timeline with a purchase agreement on the land and the. The, a very difficult challenge in development is, you know, if we can't get started with the land if we don't get approval of our project. And so we're at this stage where we have a specific amount of time where the land is tied up in a purchase agreement. And in order to move forward, you have to, you know, opt in or obtain P U D approval. So that entire timeline is really, really important to us. Um, can you speak to the next stage, the preliminary stage and then?
Although, if I, I'm sorry, if I could, Michelle, is that maybe something you can take in the interest of time? Cause I think that's very important. But I don't know that we all need to necessarily go through that timeline with you.
Absolutely.
So if that's, cause I know Karen's like. Yeah, I'm sorry. It is very, like I said, it's very important, but I think in the interest of time getting a couple more comments, Michelle, definitely, yes.
Yeah.
We may, we may move on. Oh, we have another question.
So just with that being said, can you talk about planning?
Sure.
The, you know, continuing to move forward and incorporate the discussion tonight. I know we can't, you know. Accomplish what everybody wants on this project. We'll take everything and try and incorporate, um, your feedback, um. Along with, you know, doing what we need to do as a development, um, with the market and perform analysis. But the the timeline of continuing to move forward is really important, so.
Yep.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So in an illustration of you can make everybody happy. I was very happy to see just two and three bedroom units, because I think one of the challenges of this parcel in particular is parking. And then I think that for every efficiency or one bedroom, okay, put in, have different parking challenges. So I can just express this. In answer, in answer to your question about timeline, let me say this, you know. This is a, this is a town and a board that is very willing to, um. Work on your schedule and work quickly, but I'll warn you, we've had developers in the past who want to combine preliminary and final. Site plan review to meet a timeline and come in. And it's, it's not fake, the cake's not fake. They're asking us to be like, approve the project, we'll take care of this bunch of things later. And so what I'll say is like, we're always willing. To. Work on your timeline, but if you want to rush it, bring us a big day.
Agreed. Otherwise. Otherwise, we just, we just say it's not ready and then you're disappointed. Okay, there we go. That's that easy. You guys do a formative. For them, last stand for additional feedback. Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, all right, thank you all. All right, moving right along. Okay, proposal business for Monday, hey? What's the date on today? What's the first Monday of June?
Five.
Five, okay, so, uh. Proposal business for the June fifth, twenty twenty three meeting. Um, maybe this. So, so, all right. Right, fill in this, Mary, right. Michelle, do we have anything else for the folks on the agenda for next month? Maybe this, if it comes back, maybe not.
This probably won't be back for preliminary, because we have. Been doing today.
Yeah.
Could it be here for July? Possibly, August. More than likely.
Yeah. Depending on.
Um, Mill Creek flats is coming in, which will be surprising because the last we had thought. They think the construction cost would be just. Phenomenal and maybe they couldn't make it work. Um, but when it does come in, don't be surprised if the bridge or the underpass isn't there anymore. Um, there'll still be a hole being. Underside, but not the underpass because. Uh, the way I, what I've understood is to create the height that needs to be. Um, that the, it changes the cost dramatically for the, for those buildings. Because the height has to be a certain height, which is higher than what it would be a normal person would.
Yeah.
So, and that cost differential is significant. So we'll see when it. We'll see what it comes.
Yeah, some kind of, is it a preliminary, just like, oh, this one. All right, anyway.
Yes, it'll.
Yeah, that's true. All right, with that, um, I think we're. Oh, since the budget adjustment mission. Be sure. Anybody else, like, are there people online? No, all right, okay.
Is there any? One thing, since the engineer is on the phone. Um.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any comments or questions you have about the Mill Creek and Bankman? Because you all talked about how close it's going to be. Is there any questions you've got for him as far as bank stabilization? What?
Now.
With the city like here, do they require, or you just let that play out as?
And Michelle.
Yeah, I was going to probably, yeah, I was using the creek. Not ideal, it's like, here, I'm not them, pick up, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a conservative. Look at what they need to look at. Okay, um, no citizens, no hands up. Okay, service, we're due adjournments. We're starting, boy, folks, meeting is adjourned.